I'm gonna call the meeting to order and I'm gonna ask David if he will leave.
Our heavenly father, we thank you for allowing us to together here this evening to consider the business that affects our community in a very important way. We would ask for your guidance and all things that we take under advisement this evening.
Thank you, David. I'm making pictures real quick, people. Okay, let me get my agenda out. I messed it all up, don't have it on top. Here we go. All right, we're glad to have Dr. Charlie and anyone else on Zoom. Yeah, we're glad to have you all on Zoom. Okay, our first. Okay, our first, Adam, do we have any comments, anyone? If not, we will review them, review and discuss the 2022-23 budget proposal that has been recommended by the committee.
Let me just mention that for everyone that we have spent a lot of hours, a lot of time on the budget. We started back in March, early March, and we vetted it, we have worked through it, we have done a lot of discussion over the last few months regarding that would be starting with the faculty, the staff, working its way up through the division chairs, AVPs, VPs, et cetera. So we have, everybody's been involved with the budget process over the last three, four months. But I'd also like to express appreciation to the Budget Board Committee. We've had three meetings over the last four or five weeks regarding the budget. That was David Monk and Mike Embry and Terry Eason and Steve Brandt were on that committee. You know, I was gonna say how many hours we spent, but I really don't know. It was a bunch. I would say more than 20. 20 hours have been spent going over the budget with the Board Budget Committee. And they have done a really, really good job of vetting the budget as well, going through it. We went through each item with the Budget Committee and discussed each item as we, and answered any questions that anybody had at that time. And so what we'd like to do tonight, our plans are, we have another meeting, our next meeting is on August of 15, two weeks from tonight. And at that meeting, we'll set a tax rate that will be required to do that, not set the rate, but we'll announce what it is and have a meeting in August 29 for the tax, set the tax rate. But also, we can discuss the budget, approve the budget at that time, which would be August of 15. And we feel like we're ready to possibly do that, or we can discuss it further at that date as well, and/or we could approve the budget on August of 29, which is the last board meeting for the, it's a board meeting for the month of August. So that's our plan, and so we'll kind of work our way through, however you would like for us to, to make sure that it comes out the way that we need for it to, to meet the needs of our students and our faculty and our staff and our communities we serve. So with that, what I'd like to be able to do is just kind of start through the budget. You have a copy of it on your screen, you have a hard copy in front of you, and what I'd like to be able to do is have us just kind of go through it from a bird's eye view, for you to see what we've done and where we are with it, and then answer any questions that you may have as we're kind of going through that. So what we'll do is we'll start with the revenue side of it, which is at the very top of the page, and we're gonna let David Hopkins go through that revenue side with us. So David?
Just real quickly, the Budget Committee has been through this, but just to give you all some ideas on some of the board, the higher items, the tuition fees, pretty much all the way down, food service, bookstore, those items, we try to project looking at, you know, where we stand as a mayor of June, and then, you know, kind of take a summer, a look at what a summer gets us. Of course, the pandemic presents some challenges with doing that because things are not flowing as they normally would in either direction, both when the pandemic started and now as we recover from it. But those are our best estimates on some of those. The state appropriations, I think we've talked about this, those are down for these two years because contact hours were down. This will be the second year. We'll have the 10 million, 291, 910. You can look back at what it was in prior years, almost 12 billion. The state funds benefits paid, again, that's what we get from the state for retirement and health benefits and so forth. At more taxes, I want to talk about in a minute, because I, at this point, and you can see the increase, 3.5 million, I have heard from every county except Henderson, this estimate, I will tell you, is lower than my last preliminary. Again, I'm still got high hopes for Henderson County, but I think this year, the counties were looking at what they normally lost in protests, and this year was not the normal year. But as I told the Budget Committee, I had anticipated some of that and had excluded a lot of the protest amounts from my projections, feared in that. And unfortunately, it came, I think Kaufman, they said they never lost more than 4%, they lost 4.25 based on my projection. So the one thing I'll tell you is, August 15th, what I'll bring to you then is the new revenue tax rates and what they call voter approval rates, and that will be the time when we'll sort of firm up this number, and then y'all will decide what to put on a future agenda. You can see, look at that increase, I'm sure we will have to lower it some amount, but I have to have all the counties in before I can calculate that. But that's what I'll be bringing you, and then that will be the final number at that time, once we agree on the tax rate. Does anybody have any questions about that? It's kind of a long drawn out process. Y'all have all been through it before. The last number really I wanted to talk about, under other sources, that 1 million, 159, 998, that's the last of the HERF money. What that will help us do is cover this second year loss in contact hours. It doesn't account for, there's really not even enough money for the contact hours because the grant year ends in June, of course, the contact hour loss goes to August. But my experience has been, you can't claim revenue outside of the grant period. So that's what I'm anticipating. And, you know, there won't be any excess money for anything, any other type of losses. And so that's, leaves us with 55,886 as compared to our original budget of 54 of 67. Does anybody have any questions at this point?
Okay. Well, we're good to go with that then. We'll, you know, kind of proceed along, waiting to clarify and make sure that we have the accurate data on the property tax revenue. Let's then go to the second big category, which is personnel. And the Budget Committee spent a lot of time working on this part of it. And I'm gonna let Janine talk a little bit about this because she's the expert, I guess we could say, maybe the expert on the salary personnel. But basically, there were three different parts, categories to the salary that we've been talking about for the last couple of Budget Board meetings. And I think the direction that we got from the Budget Board Committee at the last meeting, which was last Thursday, was that they were comfortable with us putting something together that did not exceed a 4.5% overall increase in the salary budget, 4.5 overall increase, and 4.5% overall increase. That would be divided into two different categories in itself. It's divided into COLA and it's divided into the GPI. And Janine, GPI, tell me what it means.
General Pay Increase.
Tell me again?
General Pay Increase.
General Pay Increase. So the overall 4.5% increase was, would be in those two categories. And I have, I think I have an email or at least a memo in front of you that tells you a little bit more specific about that. In addition to those two categories, there's a third category that basically is one half of the salary study from last year. And so that we are leaving at the direction of the Board Budget Committee as is. And we have that number in here for you as well. And so I'm gonna let Janine go from there, and she can kind of tell us where we are with that, and answer any questions, we all can answer any questions that anybody might have regarding the 4.5% and how that, we put that together. Janine?
So the Budget Committee decided on the overall percentage, and then we were kind of given the discretion on how we were gonna separate all that out. And we were also asked to help out some of the lower tiered employees in ensuring that they kind of received some extra funds in order to help with, you know, the inflational pay that we are all experiencing. And so we worked through that, and I think at this point, we've determined that no employee will receive less than 2,400 with the plan we have laid out in place right now. So that is the minimum that any employee will receive. So of course, you know, we still have some time to tweak some things if we needed to, but right now, that looks like it's something that everybody has kind of agreed upon. It looks good. But we are definitely not exceeding that total, 4.5% of total salaries number. We're staying well within that range. So we feel that, you know, it's a good plan to move forward with. And that also, you know, includes all new positions that we talked about, and it also includes the second half of the salary study. So we've got it all laid out very well.
Janine, to be clear, on that, since we're, I guess we're really talking about 4% of the 4% that we discussed, the 2,400. The 4.5 cap does not include the pickup from last year on that one half of the salary study, correct?
Correct.
That is not included in the 4.5%. I mean, I didn't intend for it to be, but I'm just seeking clarity, since we're kind of talking about it. 8,000, it's simply meeting the commitment that we made last year for adjustments. We did have to end carry half over, but that is not part of the 4.5% increase. The other three items are part of the 4.5.
Yes.
That's quite possible.
We are here to answer any questions. The biggest, again, that was the biggest part of our discussion over the last few Budget Committee meetings that we had, and we're here to answer any questions that anybody might have. If you weren't here last year, we did a salary study. And the salary study, we just made the decision, the board made the decision that half of that salary study would be paid during this fiscal year, and the other half of that would be paid this fiscal year. And that amount comes out to 478,130. And so that is what it is. The, you might, you might express the difference between the COLA and the GPI?
So on the, for a COLA, COLA will adjust the salary ranges as well as adjust the employee's pay. On the GPI, the GPI is, will only affect the employee's pay, it will not adjust the ranges. So the GPI allows the employee to move down the scale in their salary range, whereas the COLA shifts with the employee.
We all had to think about that.
Steve asked me that question this afternoon. I wanted to make sure everybody kind of understood what we're doing, how we're making that work.
And that hopefully, whenever we do another salary study in a few years, when we revisit that, it should show that our ranges have stayed either consistent or very close to what the market is. And that's our goal, is to stick with that, and so we don't do another salary study and find ourselves that we're way out of whack. So that's the goal.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions regarding that? You know, I'll just mention, because this came up with the Budget Committee meeting, I don't think anybody thought last year when we were doing it that we wouldn't have a 9.1% inflation rate. I think we all thought that it would be 2%, 3%, which is what it's been maximum the last, what, three years, 35 years, something like that. So again, we're doing, I think, what we feel like, and I appreciate the Board and the Board Budget Committee doing what they feel like that we can do with the COLA, given our financial, working through our financial situation and making sure that we're doing what we're doing in the other parts of the budget as well. And next year, when this time comes up again, the COLA will have to be evaluated again, and it will have to be determined again, based on the other parts, the financial condition of the college and revenue that's received and et cetera. It's something that will happen every year. Hopefully, we won't have a 9.1% inflation rate between now and next year. I think we all hope so. Again, I appreciate the Budget Committee and the fact that the Budget Committee brought up the fact that we feel like our lower income employees are the ones that need the most help. And this proposal that we're putting together, as mentioned earlier by Janine and myself, benefits the lower level employees greater than it does the higher level employees. And so we just feel like this, it does something for both, but it also impacts them at a greater level. And so we appreciate that very much. Okay. Any other comments about that?
I just had this question come to refresh. I lose track of counting years, the state support and that. So we are, we are in a counting year right now.
We are.
And we also are impacted by a loss of some $2 million, there about, in state support that we received in the last nine. So now, but we're being augmented by, what was it, David, a million, two or three that's left out of the federal HERF money. But that's gonna play out after, after this year. There is no more.
June 30.
So what I'm trying to get at is get a mental picture that we were fast forwarding into next year, and if our enrollment did not increase, okay, no more state support, and a million, three that's in this, in this budget, it's just automatically gonna disappear. Would that be accurate? If we were looking at it a year down the road?
Well, it's very difficult to look a year down the road in terms of contact hour funding. But I can tell you right now that our contact hour funding is much greater now. And when we started, March 1st, February 28th, March 1st, we had in-service programs going, we had pre-service programs. None of that was going two years ago. And so we feel very, very good about where we are with contact hour funding. This time next year, in June of next year, we'll know what our contact hour funding is for the next bank, which will be the following two years. So hopefully, by this time, well, June of next year, early June of next year, you'll see that our contact hour funding will be back up at the level, hopefully, that it was.
That's what I'm looking for. So you have a good feeling?
I have a good feeling, but I'm a very optimistic person. And I have a good feeling, unless something happens between now and fall registration, which it did last year, if you recall, we had the Delta variant yet. Then unless we have to close down the in-service programs that we're having at TDCJ, then you don't know. But I feel very good about where we are as of right now compared to where we were two years ago, very much so. So I'm hoping that we'll be back. But I see some smiles out there. They are too, but we're, 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 feel good about it. Okay, any other questions about that part of the budget? Then we'll go to the next part of the budget category, which is basically M&amp;O. And if you'll scroll down there a little bit, Norma, it will show us that, there you go, Maintenance and Operations. And again, we vetted this back through with ourselves and with our Board Budget Committee. We're comfortable with where we are. We have increased some areas, as you can see, travel is one of them. We're hoping that we can, we'll be able to open it up this year and do more travel, professional development, and be able to go, actually go to places and be able to do things that we haven't been able to do the last two years because of COVID. There's some other categories, you can look down through there and see where there's also some increases in some categories. And if you have, we did something different with repairs and maintenance and facilities. And I think, David, it's, David, do you want to explain what we did with that?
Sure.
So that the other, I know the Board Budget Committee already knows that, but some of the others probably would like to know why it looked so different than it should in terms of a percentage.
I think everybody got the book, but what, the coordinating board, what they say is you're not supposed to capitalize any repair unless it's over $100,000. That's their rule. And so I've been working with David Brandt, trying to get a handle on separating those projects. So what we're doing, and this is why you see a decrease in major repairs and a larger increase in repair and maintenance, is we've shifted the stuff that's not $100,000 to repair and maintenance, air conditioner repairs, things of that nature. So this year alone, you really have to look at those two categories together. You see that net, they're up, you know, a little less than 200,000. But that's why you see a negative with major repairs. It doesn't necessarily mean we're doing less, obviously, just we've shifted those things so we can try to comply with the coordinating board guidelines in doing the accounting gymnastics that we have to do at the end of the year. It looks a little odd, but that's what's going on.
Okay. Anybody have any other comments or questions about the Maintenance and Operations expenditures, expenses, budget expenses? If not, we'll move on to, and I'll let David do that, the final portion of the, of the budget, and that's contingencies and capital reserves.
One of the things that they changed, we were asked to figure out what the million, 197,300 as a percentage was for capital funding. And it turns out that is 3.77% of when we started that particular amount. And so what I did is I applied that to this year's revenue. And so that number went from a million, 937,300 to 2,111,639. That's a number that nobody had seen. I just changed that after the last meeting. So once we did that, made all the changes to payroll based on the agreement that was reached, that left us the pillar number, or I'd say plug council, like you said, but your contingency funding winds up with a difference of 645,559. And I do want to caution, you know, again, not knowing where we'll finish on property taxes, that number could shift one way or the other when we get a final property tax number. So you're putting more, we got a little more in contingency, and we will be transferring a little bit more every month into cat reserve starting this year. And that gives us a balanced budget.
Anybody have any questions about any of the other last portion of the budget? So again, like this year, we are going to have somewhere around 4.1 million budgeted leftover surplus in August, August. That's budgeted. We'll have more than that, much more than that, but we'll have at least that because that's the amount that's in the budget to have. So next year, going into the year, we'll have, the way we've got, the way we're looking at it now, we'll have 2,234 in contingency that we'll be budgeting for each month. And then we'll also have 1,937,000 leftover, or should have leftover, unless it's being used for capital reserve. Correct?
Right, leftover for this year. Capital reserve money, we transfer every month, so that by the end of the year, that money's already been transferred. And then we calculate contingency plus whatever else is left over. And after the audit, that's obviously what you guys approved to, to move to capital reserve. As I've said before, I like to weigh that to the audit. Occasionally, we'll get an audit adjustment or two, so just to improve.
That pretty much was a summary from a bird's eye view of where we are and what we've done over the last three, four months. Again, I appreciate the Board Budget Committee because they spent a lot of time working with us on this, and it was important to get their direction, and we appreciate that very much. So that's where we are, unless anybody has any other questions or comments. What we'll do is we'll bring it back to you on August of 15. And at that time, we'll have exact numbers. And if we want to approve the budget on August of 15, I think we can. If we wanted to wait till August of 29, we could. I will tell you this, it is, it is helpful to, it would be helpful. I don't think we've ever done it before. At least I don't remember ever doing, approving the budget before the budget, end of August. But if we did approve it in mid-August, it would be helpful for Janine, and especially with salaries and other things that she could go ahead and get started with early on. So I'm just saying that that would be of benefit if it were approved on August 15. But we'll give you the option and let you decide on whether that's something that you want to do or not on the 15. It doesn't have to be approved till the 29th before the beginning of the new school year.
So we're gonna make that decision on the 15.
It will, it'll be on the agenda for you to make. If you choose to make it, you can. And if you choose to wait for the 29th, we'll be able to do that. Janine's going like this, she would really like, she's the one who told me to put the plug in for the 15. Because the quicker she could get started on salary, we have 340 full-time employees at the college, and she's gonna have to do each one individually because of the way this is set up. And so it would be very helpful, and I've already told her to go ahead and start working on it. But it would be helpful if we knew that that salary was going to be what we talked, what we talked about it being, so she could go ahead and put it in stone and go ahead and send out letters and do things on the plane. It'll be on the agenda.
Did you say 345 employees?
Somewhere around 340, 345. We lose them regularly and we gain them regularly. I think we lost one, I think I saw one resign this week. So somewhere around 340. Then we have another 150, 160 adjunct part-time employees, mainly faculty, adjunct faculty. Okay, anybody have any other comments then? We'll move on then. Thank you so much for everyone for listening. And if you have any questions about any of this, if you had a chance to take it home, look at it, and don't hesitate to contact myself or David Hopkins or any of us, and we can get back to you and let you know.
All right.
Thank you.
If no one has any more questions on that, we'll move to the President.
Okay, I have a kind of a short report tonight. I didn't know how long our meeting was going to be. So I did want to mention, summer graduation is going to be held on August of 12th, which is a Friday, and it will be at 10:00 AM in the Cardinal Gym. Though, as you know, the last couple of graduations, they were larger graduations, so we had them at the high school. This one will be in our gymnasium. So I think for summer graduation, they're never as big as the others, and so we think, we feel comfortable with that. Marcusson Foundation, I think I sent out a, in one of my updates, this information to the board, but I wanted you to know that they gave us $400,000. And that's a big deal. They gave us $1.2 million three years ago, we, 400,000 a year for the last three years. And basically, that's to be used for dual credit. And, you know, I think a lot of you know this, I've mentioned, and I know Kristen has mentioned it as well, somewhere around 45% of our enrollment is dual credit now, which is high. A lot of colleges are 30, 35. But the reason we have so many kids, so many students in dual credit is the Marcusson Foundation. Because the Marcusson Foundation is paying for the tuition fees for a lot of students that could not go if it weren't for the Marcusson Foundation. It's a Promise program. A lot of you've heard about Promise programs at other colleges, Dallas Community other colleges. Dallas Community College has got a promise program. We, we should have named this Merkison Grant Promise Program. But that's really what it is. We're, we're, we're helping these kids that are in high school that can't afford. And, and, and we have a 55 or 60% rate of kids in our service area that are on free lunches, free meals. There's a lot of people out there that can't afford tuition fees. And so the, the Merkison Foundation has given us $400,000 and we feel very comfortable that when we get ready to apply for the remainder of the, of the grant, that there's a good opportunity that that we'll be able to, we'll be able to work with that as well. So if you see anybody that's affiliated, Rusty Wortman or Don, Don Wills, or any of those people that you may know, uh, you, you be sure to tell them how much we appreciate their, their funding because it's, it's made a difference. It's made a difference for us, but it's made a difference for these kids and these families. Now, sometimes these kids, these families can't afford $300. They can't afford to buy the books. They can't afford a lot of these things. So this, this grant has made the difference for us. The Texas Workforce Commission, Kelly Townsend has done a really great job of doing some grant writing for us. And we got $300,000 grant for the $299,000 grant for the, uh, for workforce, workforce equipment. Now we got to figure out where we're going to put that workforce equipment, but we have 18 months to do that. So we're hoping that we can do something in Coffin County in the near future, near being the next year. And we'll be able to use this equipment to be able to put in programs that are workforce programs that are much needed for us either in Coffin County or possibly in Anderson County or even possibly here. But this grant was specifically for Coffin County. We've also applied, I think I've told you this before, but we applied for a, a, was it a $10 million grant? I think it was. $14 million grant. We applied for a $14 million grant from the federal government for a facility. We're still waiting on that. And we applied for a $2 million grant, I believe, for a potential for renovating, renovating a facility if we were able to, renovation costs. Wouldn't pay for a new facility, but it paid for renovation. So we're still out there waiting for those grants to come in, see what happens with them. We've been pretty good so far. These are, the, the, the workforce grant is a state grant. These are federal. Federal grants is a little bit more difficult than sometimes the state grants are when you're not dealing with Title IV grants or a title program. So anyways, I just very fortunate that we've got what we got. We'll figure it out how to use it, won't we, Greg? We'll figure out how to use it. We just don't know exactly where it's going to be yet. Uh, and we're applying for some other grants to go along with it. So along, along with this as well. So hopefully we'll be able to, it'll all come together at some point in time and we'll be able to move forward. The next board meeting that we have is a special board meeting. I've talked about that already. It's on the 15th. It's at 6:00 PM. And well, Norma's going to make sure we have good sandwiches and cookies and et cetera for that meeting as well at 6:00 PM. Be here at 5:30 or earlier if you can to have sandwiches. And then the next regular board meeting, this is different than normal, is on the 29th. Our normal board meeting's on the fourth Monday of each month. But the fourth Monday is the 22nd. But for us to be able to get the tax situation in and regarding how that timing of that, so that you didn't have to have a second meeting in September, we, we moved that a week back so that we could have that meeting on the 29th. And so that prevents you from having to go into September, I think. Right, David?
Correct. We have to put things in the newspaper. Just need to have to do that.
State law requires us to advertise public hearing, public meetings. And that gives us that timeframe that they're required to have. Okay. That's all my report. If anybody has any questions, or I'll be happy to answer any or, okay.
All right. If no one has any questions on the President's report, we'll move to item number five. Consider the minutes of June of 27, 2022 meeting. Those have been presented to you. Is there any corrections or additions? If not, Steve makes motion to approve it.
Second.
Dr. Clayton makes motion, um, seconds the motion. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. All polls like sign, motion carries. Item number seven. Consider the business financial investment report for May of 2022. David, your time again.
I just want to point out a few things. Not, not a lot has changed, shifting over between May and June. Uh, you know, the tuition fees is picking up, uh, not, not as fast as we would hope at this point, but, uh, state preparations are down. We talked about that. A B2, it'll be a B6 by the end of the year. Uh, F form taxes are up. Uh, one thing I do want to point out that, uh, our food service budget, you know, the food service, bookstore, all those things that were affected by COVID, we in June, and these are preliminary numbers, 1.22, we've already exceeded the, the amended budget for the current year. So, you know, there was a trend when we were doing that, the 1,200 budget, that trend was down. Uh, we were hoping to get the 1.201. If we exceeded that, and again, bookstore, purchase orders I've signed, they've got, they've got a lot of purchases going on this summer in preparation for the fall semester. And, and our housing is, is also picking up. The, the last thing I want to point out, the, down at the bottom, you see other, other sources. Uh, we have recorded the fall and spring loss revenue out of the HERF funding. It's about a million 855, I believe, was the loss revenue number. The rest of that is a spatter of, uh, other sources of sale of assets and various things. But, uh, the last piece that I will do, you'll, you'll see this show up probably in August, is I will draw down the entire year of contact hour loss. And, and again, when we get to HERF, you'll see what that's going to leave us with for next year. And that budget number, as a matter of fact, as you recall, looking at the budget, the million 151, that's what's going to be left, once we do all these drawn out. So I think that's, I don't really have anything on payroll. We talked a lot about payroll in this. On the M and O page, uh, I don't think there's anything there. Again, what I will point out again is a lot of those variances, uh, as we talked about, we moved some budget dollars up for contingency, uh, for supply chain issues in some of those areas, equipment and furniture, uh, and so forth. This point is of June, we're, we're showing excess 11.1 billion, uh, which is not surprising that, that continues to drop as we have gotten all of our property taxes in. Uh, again, we've already talked about the healthy excess that we expect, uh, in a budget for. Does anybody have any questions on those? Not a lot of change in the summer. Let's go down to page four. Just real quickly go through the cash. I think, David, we talked about this a little bit. Budget Board Committee, we've got 23.8, uh, still in cap reserve, healthy operating reserve at seven. Go down to the next page. Showing your investments there. In the capital reserve sheet, I'll point this out. You'll see this on over 25,000 on the next page down. You've got, uh, some Northwest Dorm expenses, 241,019, and some engineering costs on the Gerald campus parking lot. Again, leaves us with 23.8. On the over 25,000, next page down, uh, see you get the Northwest Dorm. Uh, I was trying to think, uh, there's anything else. Oh, one thing I did want to point out that was unusual, I had to ask, uh, the 27,528 at the bottom, uh, this is coming, this is not out of the operating budget. I want to make that clear. This was, uh, we are passing the baton, uh, with the, I guess it's the football.
Football conference, yeah.
And we're, we're passing the money since we're no longer treasurer, we're passing that over to Tyler Junior College. So we had to write him a check. But then again, that was agency money that we probably, you know, some of it we received and we became treasurer. So we're just passing the baton there. Does anybody see anything else there that, uh, have a question about? Uh, let's, uh, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on HERF because we really, other than what we've already done as of the last meeting, uh, I'll show you. You see, we've got, uh, 2.8 million left. We'll go down, uh, three pages, I think. Yes. Again, those are those numbers that, that I was, I was showing you that we will have a million 159 that you saw in the budget. We'll have a million 342 in contact hours that we could get. And so that'll run us short about $182,000. Uh, and that's really, you know, what we'll be using most of if we get the contact hours. So.
David, I know we're, our revenue for our, um, some of our areas are up with you mentioned earlier. Didn't we use HERF or weren't, weren't we anticipating using HERF funding to offset some of that decline in some of those areas that we are not going to have to use?
Well, we, well, that's what I was talking about. We, we drew down the million 855 for tuition, bookstore, uh, housing and more.
So you've already used that. And, and that's, that's actually what we lost in revenue?
Right. 1.855. That was for fall and spring.
Okay.
Now, my, my intention, because there's not enough to go around. We, I don't, I don't expect us to lose that much in the summer. So my anticipation was to only draw contact hours. We haven't drawn any of that for the year. So that'll be one, another 1.6 billion. And, and that's the number you see up there in black is all we would have left after that.
I was for some reason thinking that we would have, potentially have some additional money in addition to the 1.159 that could be available because our revenue was up in some of these other categories. But that's not the case.
Well, it wasn't, you know, again, compared to pre-COVID.
Right.
We were doing a little bit better, but when, when you're looking at just fall and spring, we, we really didn't increase enough to make a, a big difference.
Okay.
You know, we were more holding our own, but when you compare it to that.
Pre-COVID.
Pre-COVID, you know, we're still fairly short.
Thank you.
Uh, I believe that is all I have on this one. Does anybody have any questions?
Uh, you want to prove it?
Yes.
Okay. Mike proves it. You don't second it, David. David second. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. All polls like sign, motion carries. Number seven, consider and discuss the photocopy or lease agreement.
I'm going to let David do this one too. David did a good job of, uh, of that one. So David, it's all yours.
Well, actually Melissa did a good job working with our.
You told me you were going to, you were going to say something about Melissa and I meant to as well.
She said she could quit if I made.
She did all the work and she.
She did. Uh, working with our, our Xerox rep, I was actually quite surprised that they were able to pull this off. But in, in a lot of this detail is in your memo, but our, our leases are up, I think it's October-ish timeframe. Um, we're replacing all the copiers except for two. We will not replace those because they didn't have enough copies on them. So they don't need your copiers. Uh, we've got one additional copier in the fitness center. And, uh, I believe that was pretty much it. But we were able to do all of this and even add an additional copier. And our cost per month is going up $71.41. That's it. So, uh, and we have a couple of quotes here for two, uh, of the co-ops, DR and the Army. And, uh, we would recommend, uh, renewing our leases, uh, using the DR with our document solutions Xerox rep.
$856 a year increase. That's pretty good. You did good. Melissa did good. Excuse me. Melissa did good.
Uh, you know, I don't know how they did it, but I'm, I'm pleased. So.
So you're all right with that? All right. Anyone have any questions about the lease agreement? If not, I hear motion was approved. Ron Day makes motion to approve it. Dr. Terry seconds that motion. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. All polls like sign, motion carries. Item number eight, consider and discuss easement request by Trinity Valley Electric Co-op.
The first one that we'd like to discuss is the Trinity Valley Electric Co-op. This is on the, the TBCC Ranch, the Tri-Cities Ranch. We've been asked by someone that lives in the area, uh, has a home site or will have a home site, Larry Dunn and Leslie Welling. Actually, they, they went to Jerry Stone and Jerry Stone came to us and about possibility of doing an easement. And so we had Lee review the, the easement agreement and Mark Robinson went out and looked to make sure everything was okay. I, I wanted to make sure it was okay with Mark. It's okay with Mark. It was going to be okay for everybody else. And so he did look at it and the, uh, easement's not a problem for us. So we were just asked, there's an exhibit back there that shows you, actually they're going across the road. That's the road that goes, um, east-west, beside the ranch, not in front of the ranch. It goes beside the ranch. That east-west? Yeah, that is east-west. And so, um, they're going to, I think they're going to build a house out there, do something. So they're, this would allow them to have electric power. And so we've, this is kind of a courtesy. We've done this for other people. It's not going to do anything to us that would cause any issue. So we would ask for the board to approve this.
David makes motion to approve it. Mike seconds that motion. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. All polls like sign, motion carries. Item number nine, consider and discuss easement right-of-way request by Encore.
So this one is different. This is over on the 155 acres, the Kilman property that we're still getting ready to put out on the market and sell. And we talked about whether we should do this before we sell the property or does it matter after we sell the property? And they really want us to go ahead and do it. And this is a, a individual by the name of Mike Wells. He lives across the street from our property there. That's the Star Harbor Road. And again, uh, we've been out and looked. It's not going to be any issue for us. It's a more of a courtesy thing again, uh, for us to be able to do this. This will allow him to have, um, electric, electric, electric power to some places that he does not have currently. And so we, we've reviewed it. We're all got okay with it. Lee Porter's reviewed it. She's okay with it. So we just asked the board to approve this and for us to be able to go ahead and do that. And we're, hopefully we're going to sell this property in the next, I don't know, what do you think, Steve? Two months? We're going to sell this property in the next short period of time. But we, we would ask for this to be approved. And this was another day approached Jerry. I think they go to church with Jerry and they approached Jerry and Jerry brought it to us and we're trying to move forward with it.
Dr. Clayton makes motion to approve it. Dr. Terry seconds that motion. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. All polls like sign, motion carries. Item number 10, consider and discuss renewing, renewal of the Region 7 Education Service Center Purchasing Co-op Interlock Agreement.
This is something that they require us to do each year. I'm not real sure why they require it. Some of the other co-ops don't require it, but they do. And, um, I know we've had discussion with Lawana about this and also David Hopkins about this. And we feel like it is definitely in the best interest of the college to be a member of this co-op. Um, that allows us to do some competitive, uh, be much more competitive or possibly more competitive by having access to their resources and companies that they have available. Uh, Lawana, you said, uh, we spent, or we, we used them a considerable amount this last year. How much was it? You told me.
We use them a lot. We still, it's really the first go-to because it's so regional, so state.
They have local, they have a lot of local vendors that are in this co-op.
Athens vendors and people in Texas, actually, our two biggest ones. Actually, what I did, they're keen and bored, I've looked today. Just in the vendors, I have logged A through C. And we have just, this fiscal year, saved about, we're not going to remember, 25,000 plus dollars in our memory. That's just first A through C vendors, just in this fiscal year. And we don't know exactly what the membership fee will be. It's based off student enrollment. But the last couple of years, it's been, I couldn't say here, 34, almost like $500. It's well worth it. It gives us a resource for so many different programs, not only our minor facilities, but our academics, athletics. It's just a very good resource.
David, do you have anything else to add to that?
No, that's, like I said, it's, we use a lot, saves us money. Because a lot of it's free shipping, they'll give discounts, things like that. Some of these orders, you know, you can see orders.
Is this like a buyer's club type of thing?
Well, it's more like Texas D R R. It's just a co-op where stuff has been pre-bid. And what a lot of the ISDs use it a lot. All the stuff on there has been pre-bid, complies with state law. So, and the discounts, and like I said, I take a couple of the vendors on here, we say $14,000 off two vendors, total air conditioning, one other, you know, local vendors. But it's pre-bid, I wouldn't call it a buyer's club. But Texas D R R, buy board, this one, a lot of the government agencies use them.
Thank you.
Terry's probably a bit more familiar.
Issues. Anyone else have any questions? If not, prove it. Steve proves it. Dr. Terry seconds the motion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item number 11, consider and discuss workers' compensation recommendation.
And David, maybe I should give Danine credit for this one. I'm not real sure exactly.
Oh, no, Rod, Rod gets credit for this.
Rod credit for it, but, you know, not very often you get things that actually go down in price. This Workman's Comp actually went down in price. And when I first saw it a couple of weeks ago, I thought, this could be right. And it is. So, we're going to give you credit for that. It probably is what it is, but we're going to give you credit for it.
It's the, it's the running trend. I mean, TBCC is doing a lot of good to try to make sure they're bringing down the workers' compensation law, regardless of whether it's the food program or whether we're managing it on the back end to make sure that they get the case manager in there and get them assessing the situation and give them the right decisions. But, uh, but yeah, I think that as we continue to go along with our rates, that they will continue to go down as long as we keep up our trend.
So, we'll give others credit for it as well. So, but anyway, it's a decrease of 29,000, approximately $29,500 in Workman's Comp. And again, when I first saw that a couple of weeks ago, I definitely questioned it myself. And, but it is, it's because of the way they've been doing things the last year, a year and a half or two years in terms of working the compensation case.
So, anyone have any other questions? If not, Ron Day, you want to move or prove it? Dr. Clayton collects motions to second it. Any further discussion? If not all, in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Number 12, consider and discuss internet service replacement, Athens Campus.
I think we're going to go ahead and table this item for now. We're going to end up doing this, but we had some questions, I think, about some of the, some of the information that was in the agreement. And we're going to go back and do some additional discussion with them. So, we're going to table this and probably bring it up in August, at either the 15th or the 29th. I should talk about it. This is something that we have to do. We don't have a choice. But we just want to make sure that we have everything wording, language-wise, everything else is good with the agreement, and before we go forward with it. We're going to table it.
Can we get a motion?
David makes motion to table it. Dr. Terry makes motion to second, uh, seconds the motion. Any further discussion? If not all, in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item number 13, consider and discuss personnel matters.
We have the regulations, we have retirements, we have new hires that you can see there. These are replacement, replacement new hires. And then we, by the way, I'm mentioning Courtney Walker. A lot of you know Courtney. She was here for, I don't know, seven or eight years?
Ten years.
Ten years? Really? Ten years? Wow. She was here for 10 years. She used to sit out there in the second row. She's back. She left a couple of years ago. Was it two years ago she left? Two years ago she left? And she's back. She wants to come back to work for us again. She expressed a real desire to be here at TBCC.
What's her position?
Her position will be.
Assistant controller.
Yeah, assistant controller. And it's, we're very proud to have her back. And I see Stephanie back there in the back. She's very, it's kind of a different, different scenario. Stephanie worked for her. Stephanie was the assistant controller, and then Stephanie became the controller. And now, she's coming back, and she understands the role. And they both work together very well. And so, I think they both understand the roles are reversed, but she still wants to come back and, because I think she enjoys working at TBCC. So, anyways, I just wanted to mention that. Courtney will be back, and we're glad to have her back. She was very, she was very confident, very well understood a lot of the business parts of the college, which, you know, it's also very helpful to have somebody coming in that already knows a lot of that, rather than trying to train them where you can spend a year or two trying to train them to learn that. The other one is Dre, Dre, Dreann Johnson? Raise your hand or stand up. There you go. It's Dre. Dre, everybody calls him Dre. D R A is what they call Dre. Is that right?
Close.
Okay. It's D R E, but is it Dre or Dre? Okay, well, anyway, we're, okay. It's Dr. Johnson. And Dr. Johnson is going to be our new provost on our Carroll campus. He's taking Algy's place. And we're very, very happy with that move. We think he'll do, with all the activities that are going on in Kaufman County, all the different balls that are juggling around in the air all at the same time, he can help us get through the things that we need to get through to be able to go forward. So, we're very proud to have Dr. Johnson in that role. He's also going to be working over at the Kaufman, what used to be the Health Science Center. He'll be, he'll be working there as well. And at least for the time being, going to be doing, have a little bit of a role to play at the Palestine campus as well. So, we put a lot of responsibilities on his shoulder, but we know that he can do the job. We're very proud to have him here. We're looking forward to all the good things that Dr. Johnson is going to do. Thank you. Thank you. He'll be, he'll be good. Okay, and that was pretty much it. We just asked for the approval of the personnel.
Approval of personnel. Dr. Terry, Dr. Clayton seconds it. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, item number 14, we need a motion to go into closed session. Ron Day makes that motion. David Mock seconds that motion. Any further discussion? If not, we're going to close session. Folks will be back shortly.
7:16 and going out.
Well, I got, I got the other.
Okay, good.
7:16 for my the motion. And who's second to you? Okay, okay.
So, now that we're out of the session, we'll go to item 15.
Okay, we're back in open session, and we'll consider the action taken in the closed session. We want to consider the approval of settlement offer regarding TBCC Texas Health Science Center and give the college president the authority to sign any necessary documentation related to the signing and to negotiate the terms of signing documentation in accordance to the college, to the college attorney. So, I hear a motion that, any questions about that? I hear a motion to approve it. David makes a motion. Do you have a question? Do you second it? Okay, David's makes motion, Mike second the motion. Any further discussion? If not all, in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. No one else have any questions? Do I hear someone who want to adjourn?
I'm going to motion with adjourn.
I think I'm going to make that motion. We just need a second.
It's Dr. Terry's second motion. All in favor, say aye. Good night, you all. Have a safe trip home.
Thank you. Thank you.